Mark, you wait.
Aye.
That's it? All right, it's 6:30, Monday, April 22nd. Let the regular city council meeting come to order. Mr. Clark's running five minutes late, so he'll be here shortly, but we're gonna go ahead and start. Praise for the application of the pledge, please. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. With it not temptation, but with it a thirst, we will be the honest kingdom in the power and glory of it. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is ours, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ryan, we got any rest of comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Prove the agenda, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Prove minutes, city council regular meeting minutes, March 25th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I have several things that I see in these minutes that need to be corrected. There's a matter of 16, and I would like to make an amendment that these minutes be removed from the agenda for approval tonight and addressed at the next meeting. I've got 16 things on here.
Okay, let me ask you, Mr. Mayor, why didn't you supply that over the last two weeks? So we could have been working on that.
Well, these minutes were presented to the city council for approval.
Okay, but they've been out there since March 27th. So if we had known ahead of time that they're truly corrections, we could have been working on them.
Well, the corrections are supposed to be... When I did that before, I was told to, if I have any suggestions, to bring it to the meeting. So that's why I brought it to the meeting.
Okay, but I just think at this point, you know, to say there's 16 corrections, you know...
You just try and have it amended, like, minutes amended at the next meeting? Is there literally corrections that need to be made?
It's up to you, all your vote, not mine.
And there's a motion and a second on the floor, but if she turns them in to be amended, and they actually need to be amended, then we can put it back on the agenda for the amended version.
Okay.
Yes or no, Mark?
Yes, that's possible. That's a possible way to address it.
All right, so we...
So, I mean...
Do I have a motion table? That's what do we have?
To the next, to carry it over to the next meeting.
Well, you're not tabling into the next meeting. You've gotta meet... What she's proposing is that you would go ahead and vote and adopt them tonight. She can turn in her proposed revisions, and if there were revisions that need to be made and be put back on the next agenda to be amended. Because there is already a motion second on the floor to adopt.
So do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Aye.
Got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Okay. City Council special call meeting minutes, March 28th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor? I have a question about these minutes. As to whether or not this was a special meeting of the city council. When I checked in the city clerk's office, I was told it was a town hall meeting, and that, I says, well, then there's no, you know, I'm not gonna be marked absent because I didn't know anything about any special meeting and what the topic was.
No, you didn't, you didn't need to be there if you didn't want to be there. It wasn't a actual, but it requires a...
We had a court.
We had a court, so we had to put out an announcement that we had made.
But it didn't comply with the requirements for a special call meeting. So it could have been a town hall meeting, it could have been a mayor's open house or whatever, but it was not a special call meeting because a special call meeting, there's certain requirements for that. And you can't put out an agenda, and then when you get to the meeting, it's entirely different agenda. When it's first talked about, it was to give, get input from the citizens. But I found out later that it was some kind of report on the utility department. And I didn't even know about that. It was gonna be a report on the utility department. I was not notified that there's a special meeting, we're gonna give a report in the utility department because I'm very interested in what's going on.
No, and someone asked questions about the utilities, and I had prepared a presentation for the question. That's what it was.
You came down with a presentation for the utility department?
Because I knew the question would be asked, sure.
So information was given out this meeting, I still don't have it. I mean, I'm a part of this council.
You were given, the information was provided to all of you.
I did not receive any information about the utility department, the utility rates, and that is the subject that is...
It wasn't a discussion on rates, it was a discussion on the act.
Well, whatever the discussion was, Mr. Mayor, I'm a part of this council, and I should be given the same information as everybody else.
You were given the information. You were, you were provided the information.
When was that? When was it given to me?
We gave it to everybody.
I'm telling you, I did not get it. And I'm telling you that I was not notified this was a special meeting to discuss the utility department.
Well, it was a special meeting, it took place, and we had minutes. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
But these are not, these are not city council minutes, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question. Second, second.
Okay. All right. City Council work session meeting minutes, April 8th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay. Mr. Creashay?
Yes, sir. First item on our agenda for tonight's city council meeting is a public hearing. This public hearing is on zoning ordinance number 202404, text amendment, NUP, Article 38, Plan Unit District Regulations, Section 3, Capital A, Point 1, Neighborhood Unit Plan. The Neighborhood Unit Plan was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission voted to recommend the city council adopt the zoning ordinance, text amendment as presented in Exhibit A, which is in the agenda package. We will open the public hearing at 6:36. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the text amendment? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak against the text amendment, or rather, adoption of the text amendment contained in ordinance number 202404? Seeing no one, the city council on motion can close the public hearing at 6:37.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item on your agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is a second reading of ordinance number 202404, text amendments to the zoning ordinance, Neighborhood Unit Plan. This is just what we held the public hearing on. And as I said earlier, this was reviewed by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission voted to recommend the city council adopt the zoning ordinance text amendment as contained in ordinance number 202404.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there no discussion, Mr. Mayor?
No.
Sure.
This particular ordinance, and I had this question for the city attorney at the last meeting. The application was presented to the planning commission by the mayor. It was not the city council, and it keeps going back and forth, it's the city council. But it was, the application was presented by, by the mayor. And my question is, can any member of this city council present something to the planning commission, an ordinance, to make a zoning amendment? If the mayor can go to the planning commission and have them do something, but, you know, adopt, propose an ordinance or a change in our zoning ordinance, can any member of the city council do the same thing?
Yes.
You said that last month.
So it would not be referred to as something that was requested by the city council? Say, for instance, I went before them. It couldn't be something that said that the city council is requesting this?
The city council as a body could take action to request something for an individual councilman.
Well, when this came forward, before us, it was presented to us as this was something that was coming from the city council. And the city council never as a body decided that they wanted to make these changes to the zoning ordinance.
No, it's always presented as the city council, it was always presented as the mayor.
And that's what the councils vote. As a whole now, you're voting as to whether or not you want to make these changes.
Right.
With the recommendation of the...
That's the purpose of the action you're about to take here, is for the council to decide whether or not to make these changes.
Okay, you've answered my question, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor? Ladies? Okay. Next, Mr. Creashay?
The next item on the agenda is a decision on Resolution Number 202404, Local Maintenance Improvement Grant Project for fiscal year 2024, Downtown Area Drainage Improvement Project. We discussed this earlier. This is on the capital improvement plan. We have accumulated L-MAG funds in fiscal year 2022, 2023, and this year, 2024, from the Georgia Department of Transportation. And we would like to invest the total L-MAG funds in revitalizing the downtown area infrastructure, mainly the drainage on Main Street from Post Street to Church Street, including, but not limited to, the intersection of Main Street, Griffin Street, West Broad Street, and Church Street, thereby designating this area as our fiscal year 2024 L-MAG project for the city of Grantville. This resolution will be forwarded, if approved, to the Georgia Department of Transportation.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I just wanna make one statement.
Yes, ma'am.
This is also to help with our LCI plan in preparation for the big picture.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I have a question. Was this a grant? It says adopting the Maintenance Improvement Grant Project.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Was this a grant, a request for a grant to the Department of Transportation?
No, it is not a request for a grant. However, we request L-MAG funds every year. They come from the Georgia Department of Transportation. So if you would term them as a grant, yes, ma'am, they are a grant. However, when the project is finally bid out, we have to contribute 30% of the project in total.
Okay.
Okay, so you're gonna request bids for this?
Pardon me?
You're gonna request bids for this project?
It will probably be more than one bid. It may not be one bid. But yes, this project, because it's a public works project, will have to be bid out. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and the amount is what?
Approximately $150,000.
Okay, and this bid will be approved by the city council?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, hold on. No, the bid won't be approved by the city council. Because this is already in the capital projects. The decision on who wins the bid is approved by...
By the city council.
By the city council?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, how soon are we gonna get moving on this, do you know?
No.
Will it be this year?
Moving as soon as the city engineer can put the plans together. But I can't tell you a timeline.
A two-projected, it'll be this year, before the end of the year, do you think?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
I should mention, that's calendar year, not fiscal year.
Okay, calendar year.
Okay.
The next item for your consideration is a decision on Resolution Number 202405, accepting the fiscal year 2023 audit financial statements. This is a requirement that we have to fulfill. We have to accept the audit. And as you may remember, the audit done by Gerald Pentecost had no adverse write-ups, and it was a clean opinion in that our fiscal accounting meets the appropriate government standards.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I have some questions.
Well, hold on, okay, all right.
Is the auditor on?
No.
Or on the...
No.
The auditor is not here?
No.
So any questions I have about this audit, how will I get them answered?
Well, between the city manager and myself.
I have questions for the auditor, not for you or the city manager, Mr. Mayor.
The auditor's opinion is in the audit on page 58.
There's a reference to this... Well, why don't I just go down my list of my questions?
Okay.
Okay, page two. It says the, "We do not express an opinion or provide any assurance on the information because the limited procedures do not provide us with sufficient evidence to express an opinion."
Page two, what paragraph is it?
We require supplementary information.
Our audit was conducted for the purpose of forming opinions on the financial statements that collectively comprise the city of Grantville's basic financial statements. Okay? Now, is that what you're referring to?
Why would they, why would they say that? That they...
Well, don't take it, you can't take it out of context. Let me, let me refer you to, as I said, page 52. I believe that's what I...
Well, hold on, I've got the issue, Mr. Creashay. It's very simple. All the auditor could do is respond to the information that they're able to get from the city. And what they state is basically that we audit based on what the information we get from the city, all the financials, all this. We cannot make an opinion further than that on information we don't possess, which is standard accounting.
On information that's not provided. And they make reference to a report dated March 20th on page three. And I was looking through here for a report dated March 20th, and I didn't find it. Says we have also issued our report dated March 20th.
That's, that's the date of the audit. In accordance with government auditing standards, we have also issued our report dated March 20th, 2024, that on our consideration of the city of Grantville's internal control over financial reporting and our tests of its compliance with certain provisions of law, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements, and other matters.
Okay.
I mean, that's the report. Because it's due March 30th.
And it's dated right below that, stated March 20, 2024.
Where do you see that?
Right, we're under Gerald's signature.
Gadsden, Alabama, March 20th, 2024.
Okay, on page, I have a question on page 15, page 14. Page 14 of the audit.
Okay.
It's the... Cemetery. The net position.
Pardon me?
The cemetery, it's got cemetery service, it's $538. That's for the whole year? The cemetery.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Okay, and the city puts into this fund, how much every year?
We do not put in any money. We put money into the maintenance of the cemetery. That fulfills our requirement, which is in the code ordinances, to provide one quarter of 1% of property tax revenue, not to exceed $5,000. It costs us $1,100 to cut the cemetery grass. And today, I inspected the cut of the cemetery grass because we got a bill. And it was appropriate, well done.
Okay.
So if you take five of those cuts, which is not the whole summer, that exceeds $5,000, which is our contribution to the Cemetery Trust Fund for the maintenance of the cemetery. You missed page nine. I was hoping you'd have a question on page nine.
Nine, yes.
You will see at the bottom, it says, "Change in net position of government activities, That is an example of the fiscal mind of the city employees, saving the money, which goes back to fund reserve.
Okay, what else we got?
Twenty-six, page... On page 26, number four at the bottom. Twenty-six.
Adopted budget may be revised during the year only by formal action of the city council regular meeting, okay?
Okay. And no entry shall be made therein without provision.
Okay.
Okay, now, when you take that into consideration, how is it that we can be over our budget?
There is nothing...
At any time, at any time, be over our budget if no revisions are supposedly made unless by formal action of the city council?
Again, the budget is one thing, that's a different discussion than the audit. Number two, this, that's a non-sequitur. This paragraph has nothing to do with actual spending.
So at no time are we over our budget in our spending?
I won't say that, that happens, that can happen.
Not the total budget, sir.
Oh, not down to toe, correct.
Line.
Correct, line items you can.
Line items may be.
Okay.
But we're talking about the total budget here.
Okay.
On page 35, we've got the proprietary funds, the water and sewer fund, the electric fund. Funds transferred out of the water and sewer fund, $106,000, and out of the electric fund, $255,000. Now, when these transfers are made out of these proprietary funds, under whose authority is that done?
City manager.
City manager, and it's within the budget? The approved budget that you all approved at the beginning of the fiscal year? It's a line item, and you can, two line items in the budget.
So when these funds are taken out of the water and sewer fund, the electric fund, where are they transferred to, and for what purpose?
The general fund.
For what purpose?
To balance the general fund.
And funds are also sent into reserves. To cover...
If, if there's a surplus, which I pointed out on page nine, there was a surplus of about $57,000, some odd dollars.
Right, but I understand within the electric fund, there's, some is also put into reserve for what ifs? Tornados, whatever we have.
Correct.
So is that an indication that our... That the fees that the residents are paying are too high? If you've got a surplus in these funds?
No, that's the way you run a business.
That's the difference between the general fund and the proprietary fund. Proprietary funds are run as a business. And in fact, we just had our annual cost of service study for the electrical fund, and we decided not to raise utility rates, although a slight increase was recommended by the independent rating agency, Electric Cities of Georgia Analytical Services.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, you said, "we decided." Who is "we"? "We decided not to increase the rates."
The mayor and I.
You and the mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am. I'm in charge of operations. I am in charge of all the operations of the city. That means gas, electric, water, sewer, ugly work streets, finance, planning, and so forth. That's what I am appointed to do, and I take it very seriously. I discuss it with the mayor because our form of government is strong mayor. I am his managerial assistant.
Okay.
Well, why does the charter say that the rates are determined by the city council? Why does the charter give that authority to the city council? And you're saying the authority is vested in you and the mayor? And the charter says that those, that authority for rates that are charged to the customers or all the residents are determined by the city council?
The rates are set by the city council. I, under the code ordinances, we have an obligation to have a cost of service study done less than every five years. So the electric rates were... So, the electric rates were set in twenty nineteen by the city council. They were reviewed in twenty twenty-four by Electric Cities of Georgia, which recommended a slight increase. However, the city manager and the mayor determined that an increase was not necessary. If it was, we would have asked the city council to set the rate.
To approve the rate that we recommend, right. Since we're not changing it, there's nothing for you to approve.
Is that you go along with that, Mr. City Attorney? That the rates can be determined by the mayor and the city manager?
Well, again, the rates aren't determined by, they're, they're set and determined by the council. But the mayor and city manager certainly don't have to recommend a rate increase, and they have not. Now, if the, certainly the council could take action to set a higher rate if you wanted to do so, but you don't have a recommendation from the mayor and council to do that. In fact, their recommendation, their, uh, action is not to increase rates. But if the council wants to, a majority of the council wants to raise rates and set a higher rate, you certainly could do that.
Do y'all want to raise rates?
No.
So with the complaints that are coming from the community, the rates could be reduced, right?
No, they cannot be reduced.
They could be reduced if that is a recommendation.
Not because of complaints, it's a business.
Coming from the, uh,
But you're,
Nobody's gonna.
The committee.
Your, your rate, your, your rate review study actually shows that rates need to go up, not that they need to be reduced.
So this study that should have come to the committee to review it and discuss it. We don't have any committee meetings, so all decisions are, you know, are made by staff, which is one of my big keys, but anyway, I won't, you know, prolong this. I have a couple more questions that I want to get through and, um, on page tw- thirty-seven. On page thirty-seven, it's a list of the leases that we have. Did I see the chief come in here? It's, it's leases that we've got twenty-two, it looks like, police vehicles that we lease annually.
No, there are all police vehicles.
There are?
No.
Public works?
Public works, police. Code enforcement.
Okay, so we, we don't own any of the vehicles?
Nope.
That staff drives or the police department, or no, everything is leased?
We own some vehicles, but the city council in, I believe it was twenty nineteen, opted to lease vehicles from Enterprise Fleet Management. The lease agreements that you see on page thirty-seven are the vehicles we lease from Enterprise Fleet Management.
Okay.
Okay, on page thirty-eight, a couple of questions. One of them is returning to the Cemetery Trust. And I thought I read that somewhere that each year the city, uh, puts a, uh, annual maximum of five thousand dollars to the maintenance of the cemetery.
Okay, I think we discussed it, the money to cut the grass actually covers that five thousand.
So if we're only putting five thousand in there, are you paying a thousand each cutting? So we're subsidizing that, that fund, right? I mean, from other funds?
Yes.
Because we're only dedicating five thousand each year?
Only obligated to date it, get paid, five thousand.
And how much is it actually totaling for the year?
I don't have that figured in front of me.
Okay, could you provide that to the council when you can, to me and I guess everybody else? If they're interested?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, on that same page, it's, it mentions a housing authority.
That's correct.
Okay, so what is our involvement with the housing authority? And do you know who's on the board for that authority?
We have joined with Hugginsville Housing Authority. They do all our housing authorities. We do not provide board members nor any supervision.
We make no contribution to that authority? We don't, we don't, we don't appoint members to the board?
Correct.
And we have no power to remove board members?
Correct.
Okay, let's answer that question. On page forty-five, I have a question on that page. I wish your auditor was here, I just, it says the city is named as a defendant in certain legal actions in the nature of claims related damages to persons and property and other similar types of actions. The outcome of these legal actions cannot be ascertained at this time. So the announcement that we heard at the last meeting is that related to this, this statement here? Was an update to the statement, we, we have no?
We're under no legal actions at this time. But in an audit, they have to list this because at the time of the audit, March the twentieth, we were.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I saw. Now, I mean, municipal electric authorities on page forty-six. It says you may not operate any of their projects for profit. So if you operate the electric company and you're getting excess revenue in there, how, how are we doing?
Unless any such profits in your, to the benefit of the public. Our profits go to, well, it says in the words, probably insured, but our profits go toward keeping property taxes lower. And establishing a what-if regular day fund because we can't borrow money like a regular business. If we have to replace equipment, it comes out of the fund, it comes from the profits of the utility business.
Okay, so you just have to be sure that when you transfer those funds out of there, that it's going to, uh, be for the benefit of the public, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's good. Page forty-seven, um, the American Rescue Plan Agreement. Was this money that we got from COVID for COVID?
Sure.
Pardon me?
This American Rescue Plan, what is that? Was that the COVID funds?
Funds, yes.
And how is that used?
We bought smart meters, we brought, um,
We fixed the water towers.
We fixed the water towers, and we, um, bought, um, aerators for our wastewater treatment pumps.
And is there anything left in that?
No. There's nothing left to fund. The money we received is exhausted, spent. We have an obligation to, uh, spend the money by, uh, obligate the money by calendar year twenty twenty-four and spend the money by twenty twenty-six. So we did our work hastily and spent it quickly. So the government couldn't take it back, which there was a rumor that they were going to.
Okay. Page, um, sixty-two. Sixty-two. Okay, the, in this one, I was hoping the auditor would be here because there's a statement in the second paragraph that, um, the audit was designed to identify all deficiencies in internal control. But due to limitations during our audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control or compliance that we consider to be material weaknesses. However, material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control or compliance may exist that were not identified. So what is, what is, what is that, what are they saying?
And he found no material weakness. That's what we call a clean opinion.
No, he says they found none, they don't exist. He said they found none.
Okay, um, just, this is my last one, that, um, on, on the last page, sixty-four. Uh, several key accounting procedures were reassigned to allow, to allow for the proper segregation of duties of custody of assets and record keeping. What, what was, can you explain? Accounting procedures were reassigned.
Sixty-four. Several key accounting procedures were reassigned to allow for proper segregation of duties. So what we basically did is we had some additional training and we took a look at the process and basically had reassigned some duties and therefore we now are no longer under the issue of segregation of duties.
So, Betty, I guess you're in.
Yes.
Okay, was there an additional person hired?
Not for that, no.
I saw a different face in the office.
Yes, we do have a new employee.
Hired to do what?
She handles open records, she handles backup for taking payments. She supports Dave Mann, she supports Robbie, multiple operations.
And that was in the budget?
Yes, it was.
The approved budget?
Yes.
For the hiring?
Mm-hmm. All right. We are, all right, all in favor of the audit financial statement?
Aye.
Okay, I just appreciate it.
Well, I've certainly lost my place there again. The next item for your consideration is decision on resolution number twenty-four oh six, the updated capital improvement plan, which is in your agenda as you can see, to exhibit aid to the resolution. Quickly, I'll tell you what has been updated, the last three items. Gas line extension, Bohannon Road, Veterans Park, Five Poles, permanent bathroom, Hunt Street Park.
Okay, do you have a motion? Motion. Second.
Second.
Okay.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
And I think I asked this last time about the permanent bathroom. A permanent bathroom for fifty thousand dollars.
Yep.
Same kind of habitat park.
Do you?
What's the question?
I just don't know how you can have a permanent bathroom for fifty thousand dollars, that's, that just, that.
You think it's too much or too little?
Too, too little, I mean.
Well, no, it's a composting bathroom, we don't have to run sewage to it. Basically, it's, every state park has one, you put up the walls, you put in the crapper and you're, and you put in the dead gum thing to have the composting and you're done.
I mean, there's about two hundred of them around West Point Lake right now.
In a city?
Yeah.
Yeah, West Point Lake, go around the lake.
Right, see, I'm not everywhere.
Get little bathhouses.
They got it on all the national parks all over the country.
Yeah, federal parks.
I've used multiple state parks.
And is it unisex, one, or is it two?
Just one.
It's one. It's a one hoard.
One. Okay, well, you're putting that over at the, uh, Hunt Street.
Because they can't get to the bathrooms at the splash park of the.
Yeah, the chain, yeah, they've got a, a chain that vents around the bathrooms, so.
Correct.
Mm-hmm, okay. All in favor of the capital improvement plan?
Next item we have for your consideration is a decision on resolution twenty-four oh seven, pole attachment license agreement. We have a new utility coming into Grantville that is Comcast.
Spectrum.
Pardon me, you're correct, thank you, Mayor. Spectrum, and they would like to attach to our poles, thereby, um, we need a license agreement for them. It was prepared by Electric Cities of Georgia. It has a lot of technical requirements that I do not have the ability to explain. However, they need that for license agreement, so we collect revenue from them for attaching to our poles.
All right, do you have a motion?
Summon.
Second.
Second.
Anything on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
The next item for your consideration is the first reading of ordinance number twenty-four oh five to amend and restate the retirement plan for the employees of the city of Grantville. Basically, this ordinance has to be adopted because the IRS approved the, uh, Georgia municipal employees benefit plan of which we are part of. No action is needed. Next item on your, uh, agenda is discussion on the first reading of ordinance number twenty-four, pardon me, twenty-four oh six to amend chapter two, article seven, section two dash one sixty-two to establish the process for filling vacancies on the Recreation Advisory Board terms of appointment and for other purposes. Basically, this just puts them in the same position as all the other, uh, boards, uh, to your term. If your term's up, you have to ask to be reappointed. Here again, no, since this is the first reading of ordinance number twenty-four oh six, no action is required.
All right, any discussion?
I have, I have a question, Mr. Mayor. The last meeting, I asked that, um, background investigation be conducted for persons that are appointed to the Recreation Board. Is that going to be done?
Not required.
Is that a no?
No, that's a no, not required. The board, the board, it's, it's an assertion that that board deals with children. That's a volunteer thing, if they want to deal with children. The board basically has the responsibility of simply a fiduciary and a looking over of parks and recreation and, and, and recommendations. It is not a coaching platform. If people on the board want to coach or mess with kids, they can. If they're on the board and they choose not to be around children, they don't have to be. So it's not a requirement.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that the appointments that were made at the last meeting, appointments to the Recreation Board be reconsidered.
You're free to request to put that on the, uh, work session. However, I, you know, to take people off the board is going to have to be some reasoning behind it, and right now, nothing is really there to do so. So you're free to push that forward for next month. Okay?
Well, I was a motion.
We're not motioning on that tonight, we're not adding anything to the agenda. That has to go through work session. That has to go through work session. So that'll, if you like it, please submit it in email on, for May, okay? All right, seeing as we have no residential comments, the visiting union is concluded, we are adjourned.